Good evening, Michael. This seems to be our only studio. Well, we live in a person, so it's here. It's our Wednesday, July 5th workshop for the Village Board. We have a very few items of business and then we'll hope to be heading out of here before the sun sets. The first is the opportunity to request to vote, add and modify agenda items. I'd like to move item 3B to the top so that we can release Kathy from the audience to observe. Second, in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, so Kathy, do you want to talk us through your, you think, come up with that?
Sure.
Oh, do we have announcements that you'd like, that you'd like to do? I don't have any.
The mural is almost done.
The mural is almost done.
Thanks. It has gone through a lot because of course the week sheets changing and it's raining long time. She has made it very difficult, but it's nearly there.
And but people can walk in it?
Yeah, it looks great. Don't go see it.
It was open all weekend. They had it, they had her sort of off on the side and fans going so people could walk through and watch the process. It was cool.
I heard people talking about it actually.
Anything else? One, like one. So this heat pump campaign that I mentioned before, so it started, if any ground air source heat pumps or heat pump hot water heaters that were installed in that business, a home nonprofit since June 1, 2023. So if anyone installed, permitted, purchased any of those June 1 or on. So please tell us if you, if you know of any that are in real estate. And then once we hit five, then the village gets back thousand, when we get five more, I think we get another 5,000. So we're just hearing about the progress.
I'll let you know come through.
Thank you. Okay. Moving across the street.
We are, I don't know, it looks like Jeff already gave these. So basically, we already have historical review approval on the design, but we don't know exactly where the property line is, but we assume at least part of that is village property. So we need your approval to be able to hang a sign, as you can see in there, the bracket line. That will, I don't know if you have this. So basically, what we want to do is put it on this post that's closest to the Billco door. So it really won't be, no one will be standing there because they can't, yeah. And it doesn't go as far as the bill goes, so it only goes to about here. And the whole story is what we're going to do, just like we had tried to, we gave our sign designer like all the, you know, on our block, the different ones. So that's what they were trying to kind of make it match with the others.
Two of those were approved and have permits, one does not.
But I don't know.
So I would note also that your process began with the planning board and the HTRB under the previous iteration of the sign code 104, which allowed the mayor to approve instances like this over village property. If this were, if you had not begun earlier, we would have required a variance to go beyond 12 inches. So you, oops, you got right in under the, under the mark. So normally, I mean, the precedent in the past has been not to approve things that are over 12 inches. But because of this location, I feel comfortable with it over a Billco door and it's not, it's not in the pedestrian walkway so much. And if the building is also back from the street, so it draws, draws the eye.
Yeah, no one will walk there.
It's presumably it would be your staff going up and down the Billco door. Or, or building.
Rarely, but yeah.
Any other concerns?
That still looks pretty high.
Yeah, it is. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no age in your head. I mean, yeah, and like I said, because it's on the scoop and not really over the side, like it may be village property, but it's not on the side. It's, it's just no one is passing under it. Correct. They wouldn't be able, they'd be walking on top of the Billco if they were walking up there.
I have no concerns. Someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve to 49 Main Street.
Favor? Hi. Easy peasy thing. When do you actually make the move?
Um, we will move out of where we are by the 31st, by the end of the month. I'm not sure if the new space will be ready.
But mostly ready.
Mostly ready. Yes. Cleaning it up a little bit. Cool.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, another medias bit of our conversation tonight is C Street. And coming back to the spreadsheet. Want to give us a quick break to relax because our heads are all around code.
Yeah, just to sort of go back to where we were. I put together a spreadsheet for everyone who knew, which Jeff's going to pull up. I gave price projections of our current pricing. That's $8 per linear foot. If it's an undocked boat, like they just drop people off and it's $12 per linear foot. If it is docked for several hours while their passengers are in the village. So I provided those numbers based on the request. And I want to remind the audience that this is not my proposal, this is C Street's proposal. So I did not come up with these dates. These are the dates that I was given by C Street, up for discussion by the board. And we can approve or disapprove of them and make decisions as we feel fit. I also provided a, after I think Erin gave a really good suggestion that we raise the prices. And the prices have not been raised for years. So I use the inflation sort of calculator to propose new prices, which would be $10.25 for an undocked per linear foot boat. And then 1350 per linear foot for docked. So that raises the price $2.25 on the undocked and a buck 50 on the docked.
Why is it?
What's that? Yeah, so the updated prices could be, if we approve them or want to consider those, would be 1025 for undocked. That's per linear foot. And it's 1350 per linear foot for docked.
So 225, the dollar 50 for difference for docked and 225 for undocked.
Yeah, that's odd. I might have to go back and check that.
It was not a consistent amount.
Well, two ways.
Yeah. Yeah. So I will double check that.
And the, the days that they were proposing that would be additional, i.e. not days that they traditionally have proposed to the village are the August dates.
Right.
85, 812, 819, 826. And at current rates, we're looking at $6,300 roughly for docked, 4,200 for undocked. Under the new prices, although they may adjust, 7,128. So that's sort of 7,128 and 5412. So that's the margin of additional income. And I guess the question that this board has to ask is, with those additional dates, would, would the revenue cost too much in terms of, of impact? That's a discussion I'd like to have.
Yeah, I think that's August and it is a slower month, but we also haven't gotten the parking plan in yet. And I don't think we'll have it in by August. I, I try not to like project what's going to happen with that. That parking plan could really impact merchants, but I'm not freaking out or worried. I'm kind of like, we're going with a plan. I like it. So maybe we could consider something like that next summer. But since we don't have the parking plan and I think that, you know, residents are still feeling the crunch of tourism. Maybe we should just leave it as per last year's kind of schedule.
Well, it also is one fewer variable to measure when parking does go in place. If it, you know, if by some miracle, some element of parking were being, would be in in August, right? It's one fewer variable. Catherine, it looks like she's got.
I'm trying to understand how the parking impacts the docking.
Well, just in terms of revenue sources, it doesn't impact the docking. Right?
Revenue and also traffic. I mean, when we suddenly don't allow anybody to park on side streets, that's going to be a lot of less visitor traffic for cars. There's going to be less people parking unless they actually go to, you know, the Metro North lot, which is empty. So we don't know what that's going to do in terms of for the merchants or, but we know that the village will get revenue from that.
From parking?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thoughts? I mean, I am in favor of not adding additional dates. I think that it's a big, is a crunch on the village. I think we've heard from residents and it's said, you know, it's too much. And I would be in favor of not adding additional days and just keeping kind of what we budgeted as income and, and dates from previous years to, to keep that at that number. I just think it's just too much. I am in favor of raising the docking fee, I think, even higher than these kind of proposed numbers. Just because I think we have a very valuable asset and and we should charge for that, for that value. What the exact number is, what that sweet spot is, I don't know, but I do think it should be, it should definitely be higher.
I agree with you, tweet.
The numbers are a lot higher than what we have in the budget. And I, and I think we have to have the buffer because we, if there are the cancellations that there were last year, we don't want to come in under that amount. But we could still, especially with higher rates, certainly get there with that a lower number of updates. So the, the process hook here or challenge, it's not that big of a challenge, is that the, the fees are enshrined in the, in our fee schedule. So we would need to determine a number and vote to change the, the fee schedule before we can then make a proposal to up the fee. And Jeff, just helping me think through process, if, if we were to do that, we were to to adjust the fee schedule up, there would be no bargaining flexibility on C Street's part, right? They'd be held to what's in the fee schedule and not just C Street, but anybody using docking at the dock. So you'd be choosing an across the board fee for docking.
Is that something that will happen? But we have other fees that we don't have to do that with. Is there a way of transporting that fee into the schedule that doesn't, that isn't enshrined, so to speak?
So the, the one really good thing that came out of the last round of code updates was pulling the fee schedule out of the code itself so that it can be changed by board vote and not public hearing process. So, so we can do it more flexibly and we can do one at a time. If we're ready to do this one now, we can do this. And then when we're ready to do another one, we can take another vote.
Yeah, I, back to just not finishing up before. I, I definitely am in favor of raising rates. And last year, we gave them extra dates and they canceled almost all of them. There's not that much interest in August.
So, yeah.
So to set ourselves up to be disappointed that they keep canceling and, and, you know, after we step up, we get beat up by saying yes.
Yeah, right.
And businesses prepare for it too, and then they don't come and then a shot of their overprepared. So I, I think that, I agree with that. And last year, we, you know, they had requested something that would have paid $34,000 and it landed on 27,900. So they, we lost a big chunk. And again, I think we did discuss a couple of meetings ago, holding them to, like if you cancel and you lose half of the fee, so you don't get all your money back, which will give them more incentive to commit. And I think, you know, it's July now. They've always had a hard time selling tickets within a few weeks. And once we get to this, once we get through this, it'll be August and then they'll cancel it anyway. So it doesn't really.
I have another question. On that last date, the 26th, would they be docking here or at West Point, say on there?
They did not give any proposals for where they would be docking. I did remind them again that our general rule is that you can only dock in Cold Spring one day of the weekend. So if not three days in a row, because that was a big concern of residents down on the waterfront.
What are you thinking about on the 26th?
That, that weekend is West Point rain ceremony historically. It could be the 19th, but I know because they always have a.
Yeah, yeah. So I reached out to Deputy Commander Mitchell to ask for another meeting to try to nail these dates down. Yes, it's right for Labor Day and then there's another in the fall. But I don't know exactly what they are. That's, I remember being around the end of August. Yeah. So, but if we're taking that off the schedule anyway, if we're not, if we're not expanding, that leaves us capacity on that weekend for them. Yep.
Yeah. So are we all in favor of mixing August?
I am.
I am.
Okay.
Okay, and then we come to the question of the rate to set. Do you feel like, I mean, given that mathematical, I'm sorry, we need to play with that.
The next one, August, you do that, do that by board vote, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we do not extend the invitation to Cold Spring for C Street in August.
Is that good? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. Oh, I saw on the, you, you said it's been a long time since the rate dropped. Before COVID.
Before we were in office.
Before COVID. Like 2018. Roughly, right, 2018?
When.
When the dock fees were last.
When 2017.
It might have been 2017.
It changes all the time, but can you pull up the?
Jeff, nice question.
Or inflation rates.
Do you know what the thinking was behind previous rate increases or dock increases? Hadn't been done in a real long time. But like, was there any before 2020? Was there a reason? It was ba, and my recollection is that there was research done by the board at the time of comparative docking fees in other Hudson River communities and they landed on, that's what you remember too.
Yeah.
They landed on these numbers.
Yeah.
COVID happened. C Street was, wasn't, they were concerned that they'd be struggling. So until, until the village saw what would, how it would go, the determination was made to leave the rates where they were prior. So it's been a while. Play, play with numbers.
Yeah. Move it to 20. Will change. Maybe the fees have gone down this month.
So the options here are to do it by inflation rate, to attempt to calibrate against other docking points again. Which is, will take more time, but probably end up, I don't know that it would be more accurate. But it's clear, it's clear that we're an asset that they're interested in.
Okay, 12 was at 1450. Okay. So here it's reporting 967 from H and 1450 from the 12 for dock.
Could you take down the spreadsheet so we can see if there are. Oh, I am interested in hearings. I'm interested in hearing from the public as we're having this conversation because it is such a.
Do you want to not see the spreadsheet as well?
That's right. I would like to see if there's anyone with a hand raised at this point. There's not. Were you raising your hand, Erin? Yeah. Hi.
Aaron, from where? Your forte. Is, is the, does the, does the board need to have a precedence in other places for raising their rents? Are the rates, I'm just wondering, what if you raised them five times, for example? Or 10 times? I mean, there's the benefit somewhat to having these boats dock here, but there's also a lot of feeling against them. And so, you know, if they really want to come, yeah, charge them a lot more. Use the funds for improvements in various places.
Yeah.
Right, I know.
It's hitting, that's hitting, what, what, at what point is the breaking point?
Yeah, I mean, how, how, this is a business owner, so it's going to have to make sense to them. Like they haven't had the rates raised in years, like the water rates around here, right? They don't get raised and then suddenly you slam them with a really high.
It might be hard, but that's not really our problem. It's a private enterprise, right?
It's a problem if they lose a revenue stream that we rely on. But if we don't care and we're like, well, so maybe we don't want boats, then, then that's a different decision.
Well, you're right. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is we shouldn't be making it on the fact, we shouldn't be making the decision based on the fact that we haven't done it for a while and therefore it would be, it might be a lot for a private enterprise. That makes sense when we're talking about village services, that, that approach. I, I'm, I'm leaning toward doing a similar, seeing the value, doing a similar kind of look at what other municipalities are charging for docking per foot.
The cost of hour keeping our dock and surrounding area in shape has gone up.
Oh, there's no question of mine, the rate should be raised. It's what's the right number.
Right. We could do a little research and find out what other places are charging. We're kind of unique. We're, yeah, there's nothing really like us. So it's hard to find something that's comparable. There are communities who are like, we'll give it to you for free because they don't have anything that's attracting tourism. And then there's, down any other location, I can think of, does anybody know of any?
Well, in the fall, they dock further north, near Apple Orchard's. I can't think of the name of the municipality is.
Okay.
Maybe Kingston, maybe Peak Hill.
You just reach out to all the river communities and find out if they have boats coming.
Well, and look at the schedule, look at the C Street schedule and see where they, where they start, where they stop.
Yeah.
Find a version from last year.
It's, it's Cold Spring and like Martha's Vineyard, it's really limited and like they make a stop in New Jersey.
Yeah, I mean, they, so they stop at Fairmountain and West Point, right? That's when they don't back here, but I feel like that, as you say, that's comparable because. That's right. And it didn't really work out last year. They weren't able, they were expecting being able to market and drop a chunk of people at Fairmountain, a chunk of people at West Point and a chunk of people here, people here. And people ended up wanting to come, come here. Obviously, there's more to do.
Well, let's see what Martha's Vineyard's charging. Maybe Cold Spring is as good as them. I don't know. I mean, everyone wants to be here. Right, yeah, let's, let's see what their docking fees are. Like, that's the only thing that I can compare.
My recollection, we'd have to go back a minute to look, but my recollection is that after this comparable look at other Hudson Valley rivers, the board went a bit higher because of the things we're talking about, the asset value that we're talking.
Well, because, yeah, if, if they drop us, I mean, they just lost one route. So they're not anxious to lose this, but.
I, I am not, I am less, I'm, I don't have the fear because we are the, we are the stop that they, that they make coming up the Hudson.
So let's see what their rates are elsewhere.
They did send a proposal to us quite some time ago, so we should aim to get, to communicate with them that August is off the table and we're establishing, we want to establish, have a look at rates.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I can reach out to them and express that.
And then when this comes forward as a, when you have some numbers in mind, if it comes forward as a proposal to modify the, the, the schedule, then we can do that at, at once and then be able to go back and finalize, right?
As I think it through, we should probably do it by resolution.
The fee schedule change.
So that's how we did it for water, for sewer, so.
Yeah, okay. But it's not a public hearing, a, a roll call though.
We need to add the parking meter fees up anyway.
And not the matter one.
Yeah.
Do we, do we add cancellation fees to that? Or is it cancellation fees specific to the contract?
Okay. Any further discussion on this topic? Oh, the guest on has a hand raised, I think, right?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to say, I, I'm glad to see that this year the conversation is prioritizing the impact that boats would have on residents and also village resources. That's really welcome. And I also wanted to say, it's really nice to also see you talking about raising the fees. You, traditionally, you've only measured the fees in terms of linear foot. But I want you to also think about the fact that the C Street boats are much wider and therefore can bring much more people onto the village than, you know, a long sailboat. And so you may well want to consider not just linear feet in terms of length, but also in terms of width. But anything you can do to raise revenue for the village, to sell us, but sell us at a good price. I think that's great. So it's a, good to see a development in both of those directions. So thank you.
Well said. I, I think too, just to be clear, we are not entertaining, as far as I understand right now, we are not entertaining raising the cap on the number of people. We're still talking about maintaining the 400 person cap. Yeah, so, so to your, to your question about how many, how many you can fit by width, we're not talking about raising.
That wasn't my suggestion was the, I was asking about in considering width of the vessel in terms of fees. So not just the length, but the width, because that implies more people. But I'm glad you're capping at a 400. I'm glad that you are prioritizing residents and village resources and I am glad you are demanding a higher price for us. So thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, it'd be interesting if you looked at other places and see if they measure it in a different way. That's how we got this formula in the first place with linear feet, looking at other, looking at other. If, if everyone does linear feet, we're kind of the way that it goes, but you know.
I can ask, yeah.
Other creative solution.
That, that's what I meant. Thank you. That's great.
Thanks. Mr. Almer, name and address.
Yes, yes, Walter Almer, 1 Marion Avenue. I had sent a letter, Mayor Foley, and I don't know when that's entered into the red, to the record. Perhaps that could be read this evening about the concern I had about if we have another declared drought curtailing the C Street because of the additional stress it puts on the resources. But the second point I would like to have you all think about is the carbon footprint of that vessel is incredible. And, you know, there's a lot of initiatives to try to continue to keep the Hudson clean, to include, you know, the, the release of the water from the Indian Point plant. And I was wondering if the carbon footprint or carbon credits or however that works is something that the board should be discussing, especially in today's world. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize. I remember that you sent a letter to me. It came in in the midst of crazy deadline week last week and I'm not sure that I forwarded it to the clerk. We'll make sure that it's, that the trustees get a copy and it's part of the public record for tonight. I think, as I, as I recall, what, what you just stated encapsulates what was in your letter. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That is correct. I mean, we can't control the automobiles or the train. But if we have a emergency for water, I would think it'd be worthwhile to curtail the C Street coming to the shore.
Thank you very much for summarizing what you put in the letter and I do apologize. Okay, there are hands still raised, but I assume that you have said what it is that you.
I just, if I can just jump in, I wanted to second what Mr. Almer raised, both in terms of the water. There was an issue last summer and there was a number of letters to the current of, not me, but other people raising the issue of the boats and the water consumption. But I think the issue of the environmental impact of these boats is really important for you to consider in terms of its impact on the community. You've made some headway in terms of sort of making our community more sustainable and greener and all that, and that's to be commended. But then bringing in a vessel that puts out a lot of exhaust, LSOL, that's a pollution source kind of goes against that. So I just want to second Mr. Almer's point on that as well and sort of ask you to please put that into the consideration as well.
I wonder if 400 people came by other means, much by par, I would imagine, what the comparison would be. That's, that's hard for the village to calculate, but I think, I mean, it's, it's an interesting question. I think it is worth considering. I don't know how to calculate that at all. An interesting question, I think it is worth considering. I don't know how to calculate that at all.
Right, and you also consider if, if there are four hundred cars in the village and they're circling for parking, right? That's, that's a huge impact, carbon impact as well. I mean, I, I guess, in, in some, it's all, it's all balance and optimizing for best, for best outcome.
Yeah, I, I doubt the four hundred people are gonna come individually, each in a car. Uh, it's more likely that since they're in the city, they may come front by train. Uh, but, but, you know, boats are notorious, big boats are notorious for their environmental, their negative environmental impact. So I think it's to be taken uh, seriously to the calculation. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't think we can make the presumption that if they don't take the boat, they're gonna drive. I, I think that's an invalid assumption.
Understood. It's, it's an assumption that we. We can't know the outcome of, right? Okay.
Walter's letter to the record.
Sure.
Well, I apologize, this was my error in, in not including it tonight.
No problem at all, Jeff, don't let it happen again.
Well, I will, but I'll say.
Okay.
Okay, uh, there is no doubt that the C Street brings revenue to the village in many ways. However, I am concerned about the impact that C Street has on the village's environment and infrastructure. Last year, the village declared a water emergency due to the drought. This very necessary declaration restricted village residents from using water except for their most essential needs. During this emergency, the C Street continued to dock, its passengers tapping into the village's greatly diminished water supply. There is little the village can do to reduce the number of visitors arriving by train or by car. It would seem reasonable, however, that during this type of emergency, the village would make every effort and take all necessary means to conserve the village's, village's resources. Whether that be encouraging rest, encouraging restaurants, bars and coffee shops to provide water to guests only when requested. Or curtailing village sanctioned tours, every little bit helps. I ask that the board demonstrate its commitment to greenness and protecting the village's resources. By structuring the C Street contract in a fashion that if there is another natural resource emergency in the village. C Street dockings are suspended until the emergency is over. Respect, respectfully, Walter Almer.
Thank you, and, and two points on that. Um, one is that in the coming weeks, Laura has been working on a new, um, an updated water chapter. Which will address, um, we didn't, we didn't have ground to stand on last year to say restaurants could only serve water if requested. Um, building that, building that kind of language into code and also staged, staged responses. Um, so that we're not at the emergency when we, when we make the call next time. Also, we will have soon the, the, the um. Insertion valve is in, um, and that's going successfully. The water was running in the direction we would hope it was, it would be running from. So that the reconnection to the aqueduct continues. That said, we don't wanna be wasting very expensive water bought near our city either, so all fair point.
I'll be happy if you give water only on the class.
Yeah, it does feel very wasteful, right?
Well, no, it isn't. I mean, I've been putting it on the plan when they, when they don't finish the water, but um. You know, water's expensive in a restaurant. Yeah, it's very expensive, one trip.
Any other points about the district that we need to cover before we move on to scheduling discussion? Okay, so, um, we have a number of projects that we need to go back to. Um, having put a lot of energy into, and appropriately so, into the zoning code update, um. Needing to figure out. When folks are away this summer so that Jeff can begin to calendarize and the things that, the things that are coming that will need to be addressed via. Public hearing, um, are parking and vehicles and traffic that Eliza has already made substantial drafting progress on. Um, it's at the village attorney for review, um, that needs to come to the board. Laura has worked on the water chapter. That is, I believe John has already, he hasn't, okay, so I need, uh, kind of scheduling for John's time. Um, John is away for two weeks, but he assigned Jonathan DeJoy to look at that stuff while he's gone. Um, so we can make sure, we need to make sure he has the most recent copy from you.
Right.
Hasn't it? Yeah, sure. Um, sh- short-term rentals and the, the local legislation for occupancy tax.
There's also procurement.
And procurement policy upgrade. So we have all of that stuff coming up. For end of summer and into the fall, and now we need to talk about when we are here, when we have quorum. I am away myself from the fifteenth of July to the third of August and then the tenth to the fourteenth. Having said that, I, Eliza and I have spent a lot of time together in discussion about. Parking and vehicles and traffic and I'm comfortable with the direction she's going and I am comfortable with all of you having the initial portions of that conversation. Coming back, watching them, um, and participating in, in public hearing, if you wanted to be working on those things while I'm away, you need me is the point. What are your away dates? Do you know, Catherine?
Um, they are, like, big away dates are not until the end of August. Um, something like the. Twenty fifth to. September thirty-fourth. So it's just basically one, one week.
I think this period of time in which tweets and I overlap on being out, um, and I'm hoping that you will. Step up to be the deputy deputy mayor while we're probably.
Okay, so my dates, I'm not sure about next, not, I think the nineteenth of July, I might not be able to come. And then. Um, the ninth of August. And I think that is.
Um, I won't be here August twenty-third, July nineteenth, if necessary, I could call in. What was this, the August date?
Twenty-third.
So, is, we're falling roughly in patterns here, how about you, Ben? Um, see. The. Second, we're out, August second, um. And the twenty-third. Of August. Of August, um. Potentially next week, but I can, that's kind of. Next week is the thirteenth, right? No, no problem.
Catherine, what were you thinking?
Basically, the only data that is in question is the thirtieth of August. I mean, the nineteenth, I do have the movers, don't imagine I'll be, it'll be a pretty day for me.
July nineteenth?
Well, it sounds like we have, we have two aways on the nineteenth, so you'd have a bear quorum. Um, and if you got.
I'm right next door, I mean, I can get here, like I said.
On the nineteenth, you'll, you'll be gone.
And I'll be away, so I would, so we wouldn't have corner.
Yeah. We're gonna have three people in. Or some.
So should we just take that off the calendar at this point?
Sure.
Fine, by me.
And then the other, only other overlap is. The twenty-third of August, where there's a chunk of people. Again, it would be bear quorum. I'm not, but um, it would be bear quorum and we wouldn't, obviously workshop's fine, but we wouldn't wanna schedule a hearing. Okay, so Jeff, you'll look at calendars and think about.
I mean, can I just ask you a question? So like, you know, those last, that last week of August, that first week of September, what are we thinking? We met Labor Day. Are we just gonna roll right through and?
Well, we haven't, we haven't thought about it yet, Joe, Joe, sorry. Jeff was gonna propose dates. Um, taking into consideration that a lot of people will be away at Labor Day, I don't think it would be the ideal time to schedule hearings. But you could do workshops if we have, if there's business we need to do. I'll pay the bill. The next week you'll come back with a proposal.
Well, we did bills for today, we do a W new, we're doing them on the nineteenth. So.
Well, I talked to Michelle already about this, so we'll do bills again next week.
Okay.
And then not do them, then we'll do them again on the twenty-fourth, or the twenty-sixth, whatever the day.
Do you have what you need from us in terms of information now?
Yeah.
Okay, and are you away again this summer?
No.
You had your big ones, okay. Well, shall we move on to bills? Who has the batches?
Motion to approve, well, that's number sixty-nine sixty-six. In about a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars and forty-three cents, which includes. A big chunk to green plans for the work they did on the uh. On the code and our aqueduct, yes.
Second. All in favor?
Make a motion to approve uh, bills FY twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, batch number. Six nine six seven and the amount of forty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-six seventy cents.
All in favor? Okay, any additional public comment at the end of our agenda? Michael says no. Okay, oh, guest on, are you raising your hand?
Yeah, yes, I, I'm sorry, I just, uh, two quick things, cause I know we wanna have a short meeting first. Uh, in terms of the boats, I think it's important in terms of the environmental impact for you to also consider. Did the boats actually keep motors running the entire time they're docked, whether that's here? That's why it used to be a problem when they were docked here for three days. Um, so one day it's fine, but even I suppose when they're docked elsewhere, the motors do keep running the whole time. Uh, which used to cost for us noise and also exhaust pollution. So I think it's important to consider that, you know, embodying the man, it's embodying all of that with them. Um, the second thing is actually an ask, and this actually comes from talking to a number of senior residents at dockside. I, you know, I spent quite a bit of time at dockside and asked, the temperatures have risen. I've run into a number of senior residents who've been asking where the benches that were in the growth of trees, that were in the shade. What happened to those benches? Uh, there are some locks and they're nice to sit on, but a number of their, uh, senior residents I've talked to. Said that there's, they're just too low for them to sit on. And so I talked to a lady this morning, I said I would raise this with you, if it's possible to bring back at least one bench. That would be placed kind of in a shady spot, the three existing benches are kind of, there's no shade. Uh, to them at any time during the day. So I just wanted to ask that, cause I told this lady this morning, I would. Um, if there's any way to bring back at least one bench that could be placed in the shady grove. Uh, for especially senior residents to be able to sit and sort of enjoy without being.
I'm having a hard time remembering. What type of bench was in the shady portion? Was it one of the? Benches that Fugzy built, or was it a Parks bench?
It, it was the kind of bench that's on Main Street, that kind of cement.
One of ours.
Days with the, the wood. There used to be three in the grove, uh, kind of like where the water spigot is was one and then kind of, there was one next to that and one.
By the water spigot.
Yeah, um, I think at least one, um, there, I've talked to maybe three, four elderly residents who've been like, where are the benches? So I can sit in the shade. Um, that wasn't an issue before, but the temperature's rising, I just thought, and then I told this woman I would ask you so.
So here's, here's how that works. Thank you, A, A, thank you for making the request. We are not allowed to install fixtures in dockside without Parks' approval.
Okay.
I think we're, would the board be comfortable with taking this request forward to Parks and asking?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, I will follow up with Evan.
Okay.
Watson to start. Um. And then we'll go from there. It's not an unreasonable request at all. I had forgotten completely about that bench that was by the water pump. Thank you for that reminder.
Yeah, no problem. I, I see her, uh, she's usually in the morning, so I'll let her know that, um, you're gonna pass on the request, so thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
No problem. Take care, have a good night, everyone.
Too.
Thank you.
Well, um, seeing no further hand raised, second, all in favor? Motion.